You are watching XS Laporte County Channel 97. Coming up next is September 24th, 2024 meeting of the Michigan City Common Council and Mayor's Office Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportcounty.org.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started here. Give everybody a little time to get settled. So, this workshop is called to discuss some additional fees. The last workshop that we had were proposals that were given to us. We had been working with Baker Tilly on revising several of our fees that hadn't been updated in years, but we wanted to keep it separate from the two proposals that you have in front of you because they were not a part of the Baker Tilly study. So, we didn't want to confuse everybody by putting everything all in one. So, we have our vegetation and we have our refuse disposal. As you all know, it's been a lot of talk and discussion about garbage, dumping, disposal fees, you know, catching folks and what we're doing. And we've been spending some time along with our intern, one of our interns did a great job of putting together some information of surrounding communities to give us kind of a baseline start. And then, of course, our superintendent refuse and inspector, and our inspector for refuse also have added their, some of their thoughts into the document as well on the refuse side. And then, now that we've had a forester, also some of the things that he would like to establish. So, we're gonna start with trees, because it's the shorter. It's the shorter ordinance, and I'm gonna kind of let Mr. Wolf talk about the, some of the fees and the permit fee for tree removal and the reasons why he thinks this is a good idea to make the change.
Excuse me, is there an extra copy to hand out?
Um, I found an extra one of the tree. Yep, I have an extra one to garbage, though.
So, I'll go ahead and let you explain kind of what your thoughts were.
Okay, it's an overview of this. There's a, we put in a $50 fee. The fee is projected, the fee is to cover additional work by the department, help recoup the expense. It's nominal, it's $50. What I did is put together a permit to, for anyone who's hiring a company to do any kind of tree work, cutting, pruning, removal, planting. Reason I went that way was to head off several things. One, we have a big problem with three companies coming into the area, telling homeowners, "Hey, I can trim your trees, I'm covered by the city," they do the work, and we've had several who got halfway through the work and left, and then they call me, the homeowner calls me and says, "Hey, how do I get ahold of this guy?" And I've never heard of him. And the second part of that is, we catch a lot of people who are doing tree work who know they're not licensed and they don't care. They're what I would consider slash and dash guys. They'll come in, get a job, take care of it. The problem, other than them working without a permit, is disposal. I'm trying to get ahead of that also by having a permit. The permit section, I want them, the tree company to come in and get the permit. So, if you want to do, if somebody wants you to do work on their property, as Mr. Tree Man, I have to go in and get the permit. So, A, I get first shot at seeing, are you even licensed? Part of the permit is also to give me a site plan, a picture of the tree you want to remove, and a plan on what you plan to do with the wood. Because our city ordinance is, any tree typically it's grind stump haul wood. A lot of these guys come into town, they'll get the job, they'll cut the tree, they throw it over the fence into the alley and they drive off. And then, we're picking up wood, trying to decide what to do with it. Also, I've got a few guys who are doing just, I've caught them, been able to stop them, but the quality of their work is absolutely horrible. And what they're, what they're doing in cutting the trees is actually killing off some of the tree. So, that's, that's why I wanted a permit. Then, the after part of the permit is a field inspection. When you get done, I need to go out and inspect it to, A, make sure you cut it properly, you cut what you told me you were gonna cut, you didn't cut the neighbor's tree, you didn't cut a city tree, and you took care of the wood. I want you to verify what you did with the wood. So, that's the, that's the crux of the whole thing, is to just get ahead of a lot of the problems. And I think it would eliminate that for the city. Now, I won't say eliminate it, but it'll hit it pretty hard.
So, any questions? Yes, Dr. Corr.
So, when you go to inspect, is there a separate fee or is it covered in that?
That's covered in that $50. It's the same process I do when I send out a quote, or get a quote from tree companies to remove a dead tree in the city. Before, I'm willing to pay them, I go out and make sure that, A, they did it all, they did it right, they did their cleanup, and we're not gonna get a call later saying, "Hey, come bring this stump."
So, is it a trip fee? So, I got three coming down versus, is it $50 per?
No, it's a one-time $50 fee.
Location?
Yep, I can go out, do a quick examination of the site, and it won't take me but a minute to actually review it and say, "Oh yeah, this is right or wrong." And if it's wrong, I'm gonna have them redo it. And if it's right enough, we'll allow them to get paid.
And if there are two or three trees, it's $50 for?
The whole place.
It's $50 for the permit. I don't care if it's one, three, two trees, it's just $50.
For that location.
And the removed tree, the limbs are, they are put on the road next to the house and the city comes and picks them up?
No.
We're not supposed to.
Yeah, the way it's, they are responsible to clean up their mess, haul their wood out, and not leave anything for the city to deal with.
But that's what's been happening, is that we've been doing it. Mr. Beatrice?
The comment here about current arborist license, due to existing companies in town that we're all aware of, not the fly-by-night, they all have an arborist license.
In a sense, that arborist license is what we call the permit. When somebody wants to do work to get an arborist license, they come to the city and say, "We wanna cut trees in the city." We make sure that they have insurance and workman's comp, and we keep a list of everybody who's approved to do work. That's the arborist license.
Legitimate, existing businesses.
Legitimate, existing businesses.
And then, it's gonna be $50 each time they go to a different job.
Yep, it's 50 bucks per permit.
Okay. Yes, sir. Now, let's say you find somebody who started the work and they did not come to get the permit. What would be the penalty then? Would we just go back and charge them $50?
My standard practice is, I can, I can charge a penalty up to $2,500.
Yeah, we already have that.
That's in existence. So, I go out, if I find you working, I give you a few days. Here's the deal, it can either be a warning or it can be, it can be a fine. If you come back into the, if I find that you're working and you wanna come back into the office in the next three days, I give you usually 36 hours, give you three days to come back to the office, fill out your paperwork, make it legal, it's 150 bucks, that's the arborist license fee, and $100 a year's a renewal. But it costs you $150. That way, we make sure that your license, everything's on, that warning goes away. If you don't come in and you're a true fly-by-night, and we have several, it's $2,500 and I send you a bill.
So, it's the same thing would happen if they completed the job, not, we just see wood thrown all over. It's the same process as catching somebody in the middle of the job.
Right, if they've already completed the job, there's, I've had one customer do that. I made them go back and clean it up or take the $2,500 fine. So, they added either or on that one.
Is it, I'm looking down under the contents of the permit, one, so every, every time they go out to take someone's tree down, they have to submit a site plan, property lines, sidewalks, buildings, and structures?
Yep.
How, where do they have to go to find all this information?
Oh, that's available online at Beacon.
Property lines and everything?
Oh yeah, it'll show me everything.
So, they're, they're gonna have to do all this homework. They're gonna have to show up to see you.
Yes.
It's not that hard. It takes me a second to pull it up.
Yeah.
I can pull up any address on Beacon and print.
Yep.
I mean, it's not research.
You're gonna go and see it, though, anyway, before you approve it, right?
Yep. I just wanna make sure, part of that is making sure that they are aware where the property lines are, the job they're gonna do. Because we've had several people say, "Hey, can you, oh, pay for it, come get this tree taken down." They take the tree down and it's actually not even their tree, it's their neighbor's tree.
Yeah, that happens a lot. And we have to verify, like, if it's in an alley.
Right.
If it's...
Who's tree?
It's tree. Is it? But I think for Beacon, the helpful thing is, like, you see what the, what it looks like on the ground, if it's obviously in the middle of the yard, you know, he can get a better idea before you even goes out there.
Kinda, he's had his hands up for a while.
What happens to these tree companies that come in, the fly-by-niners, cut a tree down, load it up in a truck or trailer, and bring it out to Hitchcock? And we stop them and tell them, "You can't dump this there. We got no contract signed up there." What happens with that?
You're gonna have more ordinance violations, because now you've now violated this, you violated the arborist, and you're possibly illegal dumping. So, and it's a crime, so.
Right, we have to chase them down.
It's gonna take some work.
We have stopped a few.
Right.
I mean, I bumped into you.
Right.
I still have pictures of the one that was from, well, he was doing work in Union.
Union, Michigan.
Yeah, but it was from Elkhart.
Yeah.
A contractor from Elkhart going to work there, bringing it here.
Mm-hmm. Cause they know where to go now.
Yeah.
So, Councilwoman Daisy, and then Mr. Pers.
Um, you said that this is common practice, though, right? And in the contents of the permit, everything they had to do beforehand, before taking down the tree, it's common practice?
I'm missing something.
So, like submitting the site plan, submitting the property lines and the map, that's common practice, right?
That really is not common practice for trees, it is for any construction job. I am working actually with, I've consulted with, actually, South Bend's forester, Jeff, he and I, I've known him for a long time, and I've looked at some South Bend trees with him, and we've discussed this, and he thinks it's something that they don't have, but they want to do because they have the same problem with people cutting, cutting down trees that actually don't belong to them.
Attorney of the page, before, hold on for a second, Mr. Pers, but have you seen anything like this, or?
So, I did share with the council some links to other municipalities that have different tree removal requirements and permitting requirements. So, there are some entities out there where this exists.
Yeah. Mr. Pers?
I have a couple of questions, if I may. The first one is, Beacon, for anybody that's involved with real estate, has a big disclaimer on their page about property lines. Are you suggesting that as part of this ordinance, that you're gonna trust property lines as shown on Beacon? For the most part, yes and no. Yes, for the maps, but when I go out and physically look at it, you can often tell where the property lines are without any, that's part of going out and reviewing it. But yes, I... Comment, I would beg to disagree, but okay, I just wanted clarity on that. Thank you. My other question is, as it relates to licensed arborist or registered contractor, my firm is a registered master contractor in a city, and I'm not like any other registered landlord. Are we going to be able to pull these permits, or are we gonna be required to pull these permits for property maintenance on, on trees and limbs, or just on tree removal? If, if you own the property, then you don't need a permit. This is for, uh...
Hiring.
To, for, for hire work. So, as a maintenance man working, you own the, you own the facility or the trees, you don't need a permit, anything. Or if a homeowner goes out, cuts their own tree, there's no, no permit required. This is for hire. Okay, well, I mean, there could be some confusion on that as far as your rental properties, where it's not just a single owner, a single landlord, because, I mean, as things have evolved under Sue's leadership, you know, we have to pull permits, or we have to have specific disciplines pull permits, and even though we own the property and choose to work on the properties ourselves, we're not really permitted to do that any longer, you know, so it seems like this might be contrary to some of the ways that Sue's currently enforcing, you know, like landlords in terms of permitting and maintenance on properties. And I mean, so I guess I find...
I see building codes in Sue's completely different from vegetation.
This vegetation is in a whole different...
Completely different.
Section.
Okay.
These are for hire tree workers, like people who have arborist licenses, they come, they get licensed by Mr. Wolf. That's them, they're cutting trees, she's building buildings. Completely different codes.
Well, I understand that, but my first question on this topic was, is a licensed master contractor, okay, right, I understand that, but then are we okay to do our own trees? You are okay to do your own trees on your property. If you, as a licensed master carpenter, wanna cut a tree on my property, you have to be licensed as a tree company. Yeah, no, I understand that. I'm only asking about maintenance of properties that are owned by the landlord, that's it. Not for hire for anybody else. Right, if you decide to hire somebody to cut your trees, they have to be licensed.
Okay.
Do you charge the homeowner any kind of a fee if, like, they have a dead tree on their yard? You know, it does on orders, the city can go and cut a dead tree on somebody's property. I think the homeowner ought to be charged for that, because there's a lot of labor in cutting down dead trees. You can't run your chainsaw through a dead tree without dulling out your blade, you know, that's...
Well, it depends, because we do have a grant that will power parts of the city.
We're working on part of that. The issue with allowing or having homeowners cutting dead trees, that's an extremely dangerous thing, and most of the homeowners in our, in our city are low income, and they can't afford at this point, you know, the $2,500 to $10,000 to remove a tree. So, I don't want to charge a homeowner who already can't afford food because they have a dead tree on the property. So, that's where we need to work on grants and getting other money to come in and establish a program to do that.
And we're working on that now.
Yes.
I have one other question. Is, do you need a permit for, like, just to trim the, some tree limbs and all, or it has to be the entire tree?
If you're hiring somebody and they wanna trim it, they need a permit.
Yeah. So, the question that I've got going on in my head is just, how does this relate to trees that fall down in a storm or something?
How does that affect that?
Yeah, maybe you hire somebody that's gonna...
Storm and emergency work is different. There's, I actually have a clause in there about storm work. Now, I will say that if you hire somebody, let's say a tree falls down during a high land event like we had, and you need to get somebody in, I'm not gonna, it's a post-job, you know, they still need to come in, get the permit, because I'm also using this, all this information to keep our city tree inventory updated, which is on GIS. So, if somebody removes something, I wanna be able to take it off my tree inventory to keep it current.
So, in an emergency, the storm come, they hired somebody, they still have to haul it off themselves, though.
Yep.
The storm we went through, and then they said it was an emergency.
Yeah, the only place that varies is NIPSCO itself. NIPSCO, if there's a tree emergency with a power line, NIPSCO's responsibility is to make a line safe, cut it off, let it drop to the ground, and drive away. So, NIPSCO's got their own rules for...
So, they kinda example, if they do it and drop it, and they have to go to the natural, the city would go and grab that.
And actually, yes and no. The city does not necessarily have to, I've been in kind, I've talked to NIPSCO about that, and I can actually, if there's a big issue, I can get NIPSCO to agree to come back and pick up a tree. They're not gonna pick them all up, but if I have one or two that I need desperately, I could have them do it instead of us paying for that.
Where do these contractors haul these? Where do they dispose them on?
Actually, they...
Dump everywhere in the city.
The legitimate guys, on their permit, have a dump site location listed where they take their wood. So, it's on their permit.
All right, any other questions? All right, with that being said, we will be asking for sponsors for that ordinance for the city council. We plan to put it on the next agenda. So, if anybody's interested, if you could let Amber know today or first thing in the morning, we would appreciate it. All right, the next one, this is gonna take some time, that took longer than our expectation. So, this next one, amending various sections and divisions, one and two, and this is around municipal collection and disposal service and solid waste. So, Exhibit A, and we need to get, do we need some additional copies?
Um, Mary Lynn, do you mind sharing yours, maybe, or do you guys have it? Ken, do you need, Ken needs one, if anyone has.
Does anybody else need one? I haven't.
Yeah, can you share it? Thank you. I don't say you pay for money.
Cause we'll look down and share with her.
So, there, so there are several revisions, and I'll just give just a little bit of background. We've kind of been, we've experienced some significant dumping, number one, excessive, I would say, special pickups, more furniture, more than ever, and it's, and it's grown a lot of cleanouts that the city has been responsible for, and we were almost at our budget spent just in our fees, several hundreds of thousands of dollars for refuse, and we're gonna be asking for, we're gonna have to do a transfer before the end of the year for refuse. And I don't think the public understands that, we talked about our tax dollars paying for these services, well, it does not cover, what we receive each year is not covering our costs for refuse. And this is because we're spending on fees, landfill fees, way more than normal. And I think it's because we're one of the very few communities that isn't charging. All of our neighboring communities, that's why you see people coming from Elkhart, you see people coming from Michigan, and dumping here because they can. And we've been enforcing it more, but now we need to put some teeth into the ordinance to make sure that when spring cleanup is spring cleanup, fall cleanup is fall cleanup, and then after that, it's not free, it's just not. And I, I think people need to understand that, it's a labor-intensive job. The people who work in refuse, they, these are the ones that have, this is a backbreaking job. We also have situation where we have apartment complexes that aren't paying for the garbage, we're footing the bill for it. Don't know how we got there, but we're there. I don't, I don't know who decided that, but we need to figure out a happy medium on, if citizens are paying, I don't know why apartment complexes who are charging people to live there aren't paying for their garbage removal. So, so you're gonna see a series of different things in here. I'm gonna ask Attorney of the Page, I don't know what the best way to deal with this, with this particular one, where we just start with the red?
Yeah, you could. So, what I did is, I took feedback from the planning inspection and, and refuse and putting this together. So, if you flip two, would it be Exhibit A here? It'd be Page Two. Enforcement would be the first change, so it would allow any city department to help enforce through any kind of garbage trash, rather than just defining it to refuse. So, planning could assist, vector could assist. Next page, Page Three, we would just specify, no person shall throw, place, leave, or dump, or deposit any garbage trash in any public place within the city except authorized receptacles. Same with private, we would specifically delineate, no person shall throw leave on any private property, any type of garbage, if it's not authorized. And also specify illegal dumping and reference that it is an infraction under state law. Turning to the next page, we'd be in Page Five. So, this was a determination made after talking with refuse. We have several residents that have multiple carts. So, we're probably one of the few municipalities that doesn't charge for a cart, well, charges for a cart. So many of the municipalities around here, like, we have a benefit, like, we don't charge for a cart. But some people have taken that to extreme, and we have multiple carts at multiple residents. So, what this would do is, it would define each residence or place of business would be provided one cart. If there are two carts at a residence existing at the time of the adoption of this, they would be grandfathered in. But after this would be adopted, assuming that it would be adopted, any additional carts would be charged, an annual fee of $120 a year, with a maximum of three carts. Except for businesses, because their tax bases, apartments and business, because their tax base is different, they would be allowed to have three. Anything over three carts, it's set in here that you'd be responsible for a dumpster. Page Six of the exhibit, we go into specifying that we do not pick up items related to tenant and landlord-tenant evictions.
And I found that in several municipal ordinances, including Warsaw was one. I had a conversation with the mayor, the former mayor of Warsaw, and he directed me to several different municipalities.
That's been a huge issue, I hear, on a, they're shaking their head over here on a regular, consistent basis from our code inspectors, from refuse, that they spend enormous amount of time picking up items from landlord-tenant evictions. Yard waste, Chris, you hop in here anytime, but yard waste...
Oh, we'll come back if that goes over.
Yeah, yard waste is also becoming problematic for, for refuse, that refuse would still can, agree to continue to pick it up, but we would need some parameters around it, and refuse would like those parameters being that yard waste would be placed in one of the brown paper bags, but then that placed inside a 32-gallon garbage.
No more than 50 pounds?
No more than 50 pounds.
And so we'd also state that garbage would take priority over yard waste. I think you're finding that people are putting yard waste as a priority over garbage. So that we want to clarify that at all times garbage takes priority over yard waste. So that would be something new that would be in here. Special pickups, what we would do is then go back to the first page here for special pickups. Special pickups, I think it's hard, we went back and forth about trying to put a dollar figure on special pickups, but I think it fluctuates and it varies depending upon how much manpower that you use, how large the items are. So what we had suggested here was anything over three tons, then the property owner is completely responsible for securing a dumpster, howling, making any of their own arrangements. Anything under, under three tons, the city may provide a special pickup. But the Sanitary District Board of Commissioners each year would establish what the fee would be in the fee schedule with a minimum mobilization fee of at least $25 per trip to an address, just to cover the cost of their gas, our trucks going out there, or manpower. And each year when they set that fee or amend it, that within 30 days, they provide the mayor and the county council a copy of what those updated fees would be.
Yeah, so we're trying to keep record on tonnage, so those fees will adjust. Basically, we can look at a pile, and we're going to specify certain materials that we're not going to haul away, like roofs and shingles. We have a couple of examples here. This is roof and shingles, this is something that we would not take regardless of what the tonnage is, because we really can't take it to the landfills. But then we have like garbage piles. We can estimate something like that, meaning about three tons under, so we don't, we could probably accommodate that. Yeah, but then you got an example here of a move-out. This is what you get. That's going to be their responsibility, you know, so we know that's going to be over three tons, and that's going to require a lot of man-hours.
Excellent, well, three, three of our dump trucks, three dump trucks to haul all that.
And understand, you know, as a city, we go out and do it because it looks bad, right? But we have to make sure that we have a way to find whomever, and we, we're going to speak through that, speak to that and figure that out, because after so many days, we're going to pick it up, because it's unsightly. So it's not like we're letting it sit there, but we have to make sure that we have rules and legislation that allows us to move forward.
So Mayor, historically, when Connie, for example, would write a citation in that scenario, not only would there be a fine, but more often than not, we would also tack on the, our actual cost to the court proceeding of what it was that we actually incurred.
Not only write a citation, we pick it up, we keep the landfill ticket, how much it costs us to dump it there. And like I said, it's three, four trucks, so there's drivers paid, there's fuel, there's travel time. All that's got to be figured in there.
And Mr. Dabney brought it to my attention one point in time, we talked about it a few months ago. People take it for granted that it may be cheaper for us to pick it up as opposed to buying the dumpster. So that's why we're limiting the tonnage that we're going to pick up, because then it becomes cheaper, a pile like this, and we picked it up, the roof and shingles. It's cheaper for them to pay us, no matter how much we find them, as opposed to them having to go get a dumpster. So I mean, the problem that we're having with our equipment is we're using our day-to-day trucks for special pickups of furniture, and that is causing more wear and tear on the trucks, which is why if you look at our budget, it is, through the roof, is almost, our budget for repairs expense is almost double what the city council budget is for. And a lot of that has to do with using those trucks for those purposes. So we do have equipment that will, we can use to pick up furniture, so that'll help us a little bit. Hopefully we get that into next year, beginning of 2026. But yeah, it's just, it's hard, and we have nothing to cover for the expense that goes into keeping the equipment repaired. And we want to keep the, you know, let the residents know, like the mayor pointed out, you just can't, the problem that we're having is we pick it up, they put it back out. Pick it up, put it back out. Or somebody, a landlord, yeah, that costs adds up. You know, so when we figure out what we're going to charge, it's going to be based on the tonnage, the fuel costs, the man-hours, the equipment that we're using, how much equipment we got to take out there. So that way, you know, we're trying to get something back.
But how much does each truck hold?
Those dumps could.
Twenty-five yards, they probably hold about 11, nothing to them, 12 tons. Twenty yards, probably eight. Dump trucks, I would be aware, four to six, four to six tons.
Depending on what the material is.
Yeah, depending on the material. Like that probably picked up is wood and clothing and stuff like that. But when you do shingles or drywall, that weight is different. Shingles weigh more than clothing, so.
It costs more to get rid of.
Yes, it does, and our landfill costs start through the roof this year. I mean, we were already at a couple hundred thousand on June 1st.
And dump, we have the fuel, the fuel, the tire, where we have to travel about an hour and a half, almost hour and a half, over 45 minutes, staring back round trip.
To dump.
To dump, so that's fuel, that's travel time, and that's, because we just picked up three loads at one spot, when we could have did almost a whole day's work.
And that's where you commit manpower from something else.
Yes.
I, I don't doubt that, like, this is a move-out. To me, this looks like somebody cleaned out a wet basement or a garage. But I guess, you know, the question that I have, in Language in the Red said tenants or a tenant eviction. A lot of times, tenants that are getting ready to move, especially you talked about, I think the forester talked about our population and, you know, perhaps socioeconomic parameters. A lot of times, people get ready to move and they just, they want to have the place broom swept clean so they can get their security deposit back. And the tenant that's moving out will pile it up in the alley or pile it up at the street, but we as landlords, we don't have any control on that. I mean, yes, we can tell them that they're in violation, but how are you going to assess a fine to a tenant that's moving on or vacating? Or are you planning on assessing that fine on the property owner?
Well, I do have a question, don't, isn't there a final, like you say, security deposit? I mean, if they, if you know they're doing a clean-out or they're leaving, and they sit it out there, I don't think it would be on the landlord to say, listen, this is going to be fine, and you're not going to get your deposit if you don't get this moved. I mean, I don't know what, what else we could do.
Listen, I understand the point, Mayor. Many times, if it looks like that at the street, I can tell you, it may look worse inside the unit. And security deposits are restricted by statute as far as how much we can hold. And certainly, if there's damage inside the unit, we're going to hold that deposit. I mean, we're required by statute to give them specific notices as to when and how we use their security deposit, and what portion they get back. But, I mean, how are you going to assess these fines? How quickly you're going to do it? We're required by law, 45 days after they move out, they get a notice. Are you going to even be able to notify us within 45 days?
I don't see why not. Because we're going to see the pile within a day or two. So, I mean, that, that is just what it is. It's going to be within a couple of days that you're going, those piles get reported really quick, or they show up on Facebook.
Somebody calls.
Somebody's calling it in within a couple of days, and don't stay out there forever, so.
I don't mind sharing in the responsibility as a landlord to hold the tenants accountable. My concern is that, you know, there's not going to be conformity or unity between what we're trying to do to be good landlords and what you're trying to do to recoup operating expenses. You know, we, we know that a good portion of our housing in Michigan City is rental housing. So maybe we need to be planning that in our budgeting, that with the, with the mix of the population in the city, how do we plan for that, knowing that we're faced with this perhaps more than another community?
Well, here's my thoughts. Before we get to all of that, so as far as planning for it, there's no money to plan for it when we're paying more cost than the money that we're bringing in from the tax base to cover it. So that's, that's number one. The dumping fees that we are paying aren't covered by taxes.
I understand.
So it's not covered. It is strictly us utilizing riverboat funds and whatever other funds that we can find to do that. So I would say that, number one. Number two, I think it's going to be an education piece, but until we get through it and set a baseline of what this is and what we're going to tolerate, it will continue until we lay down, put legislation in place, work the legislation to see where we're at, to go forward. I think you got to start somewhere. What I, I believe we've just always given things away for free, saying that we always blame it on the same thing, well, people can't afford, and I'm like, when people go other places, they, they're willing to pay for clean streets and clean sidewalks and clean alleys. And I think we just got to set that expectation for people. Mr. Dabney, and then Mr. Kalavich.
Yeah, I was just listening, you start talking about the damage inside of that house and everything like that, which I'm really not concerned about, it's the cost to a business to rent to someone, you keep their, their deposit. And I don't, in my mind, don't think in one way, shape, or form that we need to be worried about subsidizing that. We're worried about what's happened with the city, and the lion, and if somebody, before they move, dump stuff out, that whole scenario, and you brought up, you know, well, it created more damage on the inside, it looks worse on the inside. I really, in my mind, I'm not talking, speaking for any other council people here, which is none of my concern. This is about us getting the money back for expending our resources throughout the city with our people, you know, protection of our people and our workers, you know, cleaning up that trash that's outside, so. I'm not even thinking about, talking about what's inside of the house, we're talking about what's happening outside.
And just the hazards in general, I just, like I said, this department experiences more FMLA, more work with comp, more of all those things because of the type of work. They work no matter what the season is, no matter what the weather is, and the expectations we set for them are high. Yet, we continue, and we probably need to pull, we need to pull what the tonnage has been over the last couple of years, because this year is extremely high. I don't know, like I said, I don't know what has happened this year, but this year, it is extremely high compared to previous years. So we probably should pull that information so that we can share that with the public and share the cost and what that looks like, because I, I think it's because we don't have any standards. We don't have this kind of stuff, and I think that's why we're in this space and people are showing up here. And, and quite frankly, Sue would know, and I know Christine would know, you too, Connie, it's usually repeat offenders. It's, it's really a few, it's not, it's, it's, it's a few bad actors. It's usually the same locations over and over again. We can pull up probably the address and see it multiple times. So it's usually a few bad actors, it's not like, oh my God, it's everywhere around the city. It's usually consistently some of the same people all the time. So, you know, most landlords, you're not going to have, it's going to, it's certain houses. It's not, it's not landlords in all cases. It's really consistently certain properties that have a lot of the dumping. I know Mr. Kalavich, and then we'll come back to you, Daisy, and then we'll get to some of the stuff you have.
Now, speaking of illegal dumping, you know, there's a lot of other things that go hand in hand with this. When are we going to start seeing some orders of demolish going for the border works? I know people are putting on social media, the people are going up and knocking on the neighbor's door, wanting to know what the story is on the Whiskey Mansion in Franklin, in Earl Road, for example. You know, things like that, you know?
Well, for demolitions, you're talking about demolitions?
I know a lot of them are getting fixed up, I know they're fixing up the house where Jayda died that morning. There's about maybe a half dozen others in my neighborhood they're doing right now. That's good.
Yeah, well, we put it, we're working on some demolitions, we have done.
Yeah, we have done it.
Yes.
I know when Rob Ear was in, he probably did about 20 of them every year.
Yeah, it's in the budget.
Okay.
Yes, thanks.
Those numbers that you were just talking about, Mayor, are those only the curbside toders? Or does that include dumpsters also?
We got two separate records, we have what's called loose, which would be our special pickups, and compacted, which is the curbside pickups.
So we're over on both of those combined, okay.
And the dumpsters, it was fun to a certain apartments that has dumpsters, that the city is paying for, because we used to pick up manually, somehow it got changed over, so we kind of binding it right now.
Yeah, so we're dealing with that, so I, I want Mr. Yagowski to talk to that a little bit too first. So we got a couple of things.
How you doing, man? Good, very good, thank you. I'm here on behalf of the sanitation department, I want to address a couple of things. This would be in reference to the secondary portion of this ordinance on 2261, which would be Section 98.143. And this involves apartment complexes over three apartments that must be, have their own dumpster. And the reason being is we, as Connie just stated, we have an overabundance of people utilizing toders instead of actually using a dumpster, which are numerous. So in the past, and I don't know how long this has been, I've researched it back to seven years, where they've actually bought and repurchased dumpsters for apartment complexes, but just a select few, which does not make sense. So for example, we do, within East Apartments, Edgewood Apartments, Ball Court, we do Cool Street Estates and Salem Court, and we also do the Marine Drive, which is down here on Lakefront. Those are just the select few that we are doing, and I don't know why it's just those. But for example, we have, we're supposed to have just a small amount at the Salem Court, for example, and because of the overages that they're having, that are occurring, they're getting extra dumper, since by a handshake deal that they approved before my administration, that they're allowing more dumpsters to come into play, they're giving, making us pay them special pickups. I now have a $64,000 bill to pay for just these pickups at these locations. And then the special pickups.
And we're not tariffed to you.
Correct, the special pickups are totally, we paper all of this out of my budget. So special pickups, all of these overages are right now, this month, $4,346. And, but what is happening is, for example, Salem Court, I went there to see if they took pictures, there's now 17 dumpsters there, and they're filling them all up. So what they did is they got two yard, 30-yard carts, which are huge, I don't know what the tonnage is that they hold in there, that's for furniture. So furniture, mattresses, et cetera. I have pictures that I took this evening, I can pass these down to everybody, you can take a look at them. So we have some of the dumpsters that are overflowing with more couches and mattresses. And then talking with the voice management this morning, other apartment complexes, other people that have private apartments are taking their overages to these locations, to these open dumpsters, and dumping in those locations also, which the city is now paying for all that in pickup. So I, this is not within my budget to take care of all of that. The secondary part of this is with some of these apartment complexes, I'll just name a few, just to use as an example, there are a lot of apartment complexes in Michigan City. But in picking some, Carwick Glen, for example, on a Carwick Road, has 42 toders. First Street Lanes has 25 toders. Queen of All Saints Apartments that are right there by Queens, 80 toders. Major Apartments, eight toders. Mason Sherwood Apartments, eight toders. Kent Street Apartments, seven toders. So these all add up, and we are out of toders for residents, and I can't get toders for residents. So these are toders that I would like to take away from these apartment complexes and actually give to residents within the city that really need toders, that we just can't afford to buy at this moment. So those are.
And we just bought toders from Arco Money two years ago.
Do any of the apartment complexes have recycling toders or dumpsters also, or is it just garbage?
So they do both, but here's, here's for example, so we'll take Pine Tree Court, which is a large apartment complex within Michigan City, Southwood, it's all out there also. They have their own dumpster system. Normandy Village, their own dumpster system, their own recycling system that they pay for, they charge their people to do this. So why we pick certain ones to do for free makes no sense to me.
Is it?
But beyond that.
Your predecessors.
My predecessor, my predecessor.
We didn't. We, we didn't do it.
So, so, yeah, so I'm trying to change the system. The only way I could possibly get out of changing the system is to act, actually have a law enacted, which would be this ordinance. Yes, sir.
Um, so how did we come up with the number of three apartment buildings?
How many are there?
Three apartment units?
Yes.
With dumpsters. So how did we come up with that number?
Uh, that would, that's a, a number that probably makes sense. If you have three or more within a, you should have your own dumpster system to, to govern all three of those apartments.
Does it definitely become commercial after three?
Yes.
It, it becomes commercial.
Then, then you had to have twelve toders or so out there, so that's, that's way too much.
Yeah, like the building that I live in has seven units, and then we use like four toders. I don't know where they're going to put a garbage dumpster.
But, but you have seven apartments and only four toders.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a different example than the eighty toders. I mean, I'm not arguing that, that definitely to think that, I don't know where to draw.
But I don't see why you can even negotiate that. If that's the case, that's so, you're using half as much of what everybody else is using. I think we're going to have to think through that because there won't be space for dumpsters. Are there certain parameters around, um, location? Because seven units could be a, a, a smaller building versus, I don't know, we may have to think through that.
No one insured, which is space for a dumpster. But there's toders, they slightly involve a set of buildings, so there's a few apartment buildings over there like that.
I think the city has broadened, uh, containment. I can't remember how many over the last couple of years, but I want to say twice they made purchases.
How many was it of each of those purchases? Five hundred or better, seven, I think.
And they're gone.
Yeah.
And we got new, uh, houses being built that we don't have to pay to give them.
Well, like you said about the location of the dumpsters, as Chris was saying, out there in Salem, they used to have garbage bins out there regularly where we picked up man. They replaced those with dumpsters. So they do have, some of them do have areas on their site where they can put dumpsters there. But the cost shouldn't be on the city, because I'm sure the cost is in their lease. So they get paid, but they keeping it and the city is...
And they putting the bill. Yeah, that'd be something.
So we just, you know.
My assumption is, and I, I don't want to interrupt, but my assumption would be that these apartment complexes are charging their residents to have, um, trash services. So I would think that, that they're, they're making a profit on this. When they empty an apartment, I'm sure that their, um, maintenance folks are, are actually filling up the dumpsters with the, the furniture was left in apartments. So the city is basically financially responsible for taking care of this, and I'm sure they didn't get the tosses back or whatever they did. So I would think that it would be the onus of the apartment complexes to actually just get their own dumpsters. As I could name off about twelve different apartment complexes here within the city of Michigan City. Even the Canterbury Apartments out on by the high school, all have their own dumpsters, without a question. So there's no, there's no, I don't think, of reasoning why they can't. I think they just choose it, why, if we do it for free, why not just take it? So I think that's my, my sell is I'd like to make everybody have the same process instead of just a select few.
And also too, at the beginning of the year, they changed the size of the dumpsters, which cost the city more money. What had happened was they were saying that what they had out there from last year, they couldn't accommodate. So what the apartment complexes were doing, were calling before their scheduled pickup day, to have another extra pickup. So now we paid more money for bigger dumpsters. And now you still have the same problem, but now we're even paying more because of the size of the dumpsters. So the apartment complexes, without even coming to the city or the sanitary district, have scheduled their own additional pickups, which comes at a charge to the city. I think it's like two hundred and fifty dollars per container. So if a container get full, they calling them, tell them, call in waste management. Waste management goes and dump it. We're not, we don't know nothing about it. Then we get a bill.
Yep.
That's where that fifty-six hundred dollars that I read off that recent bill is at. For them, that's the apartment complex is just calling the special pickups. And they'll bring a special toter out just for that pickup, fill it up and take it away. Then I have to pay an additional charge for that too.
Plus the tipping fees.
Yeah, plus the tipping fees. That's in there.
But because it is a three-year contract that I am now, because of my predecessors, have adopted, um, the only way that I could possibly get out of a, a contract would be if there's a law in effect, which the ordinance is a law, that would allow me then to pull out of this contract and then put the onus on the actual apartment complexes.
Along with, uh, let's see, one comment I had was along with having this law and having them pay for the dumpsters, should we have an educational component to this where, where people are moving, where they, they need to take and put this up?
Oh, yes. We, so, so what, this, this particular one, we're, we're going to make a, in effect for January one so that we can put stuff in water bills and take the time. So this is not something that will be immediate. Um, for, for this particular ordinance, we're staying effective January first, twenty twenty-five. Because we think that we should give notice, we should provide letters to apartment complexes. We need to give time for them to, to go through the process. And then we think we should put things in the water bills and, and do some outreach for, for this particular one. Because we want people to know, especially during the winter time, it's not as bad, but we want them to be prepared for the spring. You know, these changes are coming. This is what you're going to see differently, um, and we can start preparing it for it. So that would give us a few months to do it. That's the goal.
February and March is real ahead. They get their taxes and they bound over. And it's terrible.
But if we, if, if you pass this, then it gives us a whole sixty, sixty-plus days to start sharing the information and getting it in the water bills.
Yeah, we want a cleaner city. Unfortunately, these are steps we have to take that people might not like it. But it's just about allowing us to be a little more efficient with our job and keeping the city clean. You know, we, we have to discourage the notion that people feel, I can just put it out on the curb and they're going to come get it, and they're going to come get it in a couple of days, and they get mad when it's weeks later. You know, some people, for the most part, I'm finding is that you can educate them. You can tell them. I tell them, hey, we're shorthanded. Don't have the equipment. We're shorthanded now. You know, so we're doing the best we can. We're going to try to do a fall cleanup. But like the mayor was saying, a spring cleanup, a fall cleanup, you know, and hopefully that can cover some of it. But people are going to have to pay it, like mattresses, you know? We got something in the ordinance. They have to put the mattress in a bag because you have a bedbug issue.
No, we, that, we took that out.
Oh, did you take it out?
It's going to just fall under the general.
Okay.
Yeah, it's going to, yeah, I thought it was too, Mayor and I talked about it, it was too hard to kind of define all that into s... So we put it under just in general.
Right. I mean, right now, we kind of have, right?
But we do have the flexibility that the sanitary district could define those parameters and then, like I said, every year...
By December thirty-first.
Yeah, and then give notice, so.
And, and the other things that we've been talking about, and I did meet with, um, I even talked with IDIM about our dump, some of the dumping issues and some opportunities for them to help provide some funding. Um, we're talking about a dumpster program and identifying locations, um, at certain times of the, you know, year that we have some type of program. Um, hopefully, um, in the next couple of months, we have some other, um, announcements as well. I mean, we're looking for actively, um, about, you know, how to get rid of waste recyclables uh, in a more, um, contained environment, but also specifically for our residents and, and our business owners who do business here, not for out-of-towners who are just dumping and flying through. Because we are finding that that is the, the issue. We put cameras up. Um, so we, we are really starting to look through, you know, footage and, and, and it is helping. I mean, we've taught folks, we've made them go back and pick their stuff up. That's unusual. Um, but I think it only takes a couple of times if you continue to do that, it'll be like, you know, well, we got to find another dumping place. So they're going to go somewhere else. We're just not quite here yet, but we'll push there. So I think that's, that's everything that we have in the ordinance. Um, as far as changes, and again, we're looking for sponsors for this.
Amber is sponsored.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Flan.
Yes.
Um, I have a question on, um, page six, under A, under Yard Waste, ninety-eight dash one four six. So the yard waste bags, um, I know I'm going to get some questions on this on. So, um, so you, to clarify, you want the, in the, the, um, biodegradable paper bags in also, uh...
A container?
Yeah, in a container. So no paper bags alone and nothing in the plastic containers alone, in the bag and the container?
Yeah, it's easier to handle that way.
Okay.
Because when it's exposed to the rain, gets wet, gets heavy, breaks. Get complaints from the residents saying that the bag broke the dirt there, you know?
Okay, so not just in the plastic container itself? Okay.
Yeah, and, and I was going to say somebody, oh, go ahead.
They only want one thirty-two gallon, only one. So people are going to have to buy a thirty-two gallon can to put their biodegradable in, and they get one a week. Right. But during spring cleanup, we will...
Take more.
Take more.
Okay.
During those times, spring and fall cleanup. But we got limited to one. We got a lot of guys that get hurt because, you know, we got examples. I got pictures, guys got twelve cans out there. They're heavy, you know, and it's, it's wearing tear because you don't have a tipping arm for that. You have to physically pick that up.
Pick those up. And, and people call about, you didn't pick up my compost, and it's really a count.
Well, I think the, the thirty-two gallon container is a good idea because you're, you're right. If you do cleanup on the weekend, if you sit out there in the rain, that's going to, you pick it up and you can... So I think that's a good idea. But this also says that all that's going to be picked up the same day as your garbage. We're going to change it now. It's, it's all... But actually, wait, it's too much confusion, I think, if we go to the same day. Because, uh, if you also see in the ordinance, we have, um, the ability to change and redistrict pickups, and that's something that we might be looking at doing. So we may make some changes. And to figure compost pickup into that, it would be better to go with the same day because we may change pickup days in some areas. Because we're trying to get a little more efficient. We want to start getting our equipment worked on. And if we're working like five days and we're just trying to go at it all those five days, we don't have time to put equipment down and get fixed.
Yeah.
So we may have to allow ourselves a spare day. We may have to try to do everything in four days. But we're still, we're doing that right now.
Yeah.
So that way, we have that fifth day where we can concentrate on special pickups. So we can get out there and get those and get the equipment that, uh, we don't have to use for that to get repaired or maintenance.
Yeah, so we're looking at four-day, um, four-day pickup schedule. Monday through Thursday, with Friday being special pickups and maintenance, routine maintenance, and if there's some, you know, areas that we need to get, um, because what holiday? We just did that on the holidays.
Labor Day.
Labor Day.
We did it in four days. We eliminated the overtime and...
We also suspended compost.
Yeah, we had to suspend compost because we just don't have manpower to accommodate it all. So we do change that, you know, figuring compost in. We were picking up twelve cans at each stop. It's going to make it a little impossible for us, but we limited to one. And, yeah, people are going to have to buy multi-lawn mowers.
Yeah, the multi-lawn mowers, they're going to have something.
That cycle.
Yeah. But hopefully we'll get a, a, a site where they can take compost and dump it to, uh, we talked about that, so we could see how that works.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you all for coming this evening. And, uh, just let Amber know if you're willing to sponsor, and, uh, any other questions, just shoot them over.